Good evening, I'm going to call the Waynesboro City Council meeting to order. Mr. Allen, can you release the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome everyone. Thank you all for coming out for tonight's meeting. It's good to see a full house here. Dr. Huff, that park in Melton County, to get in here. Thank you all for coming out tonight. For those in attendance, if you wish to speak at one of our public hearings tonight, there's a sign up sheet on that back table you need to sign up. Now, there's several sheets out. Make sure you sign up for the one you want to speak at, okay? And then at the end, we'll have a citizen comment period. There's a sign up form for the citizen comment period also. That brings us to item number three, which is to adopt our meeting agenda. Does everyone have the opportunity to review the meeting agenda for the night? Can I get a motion to adopt the meeting agenda?
No, thank you, Mr. Allen.
I will second that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Huff Seder. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five of. Thank you all very much. Item number four is matters from mayor, and I've got a pretty good announcement I'd like to talk about that happened this past week. Last week, I had the distinct honor of going to a awards ceremony at JMU, which was for the 2022 Public Service Awards Ceremony, and it was presented by the James Madison University Masters of Administrative Program. And when I got there, I learned that people, persistence, passion were all the driving force for one of our department heads, Mr. Dwayne Jones, the Director of Parks and Recreation, received the award for Public Service Person of the Year. A former Augusta County Riverhead District Supervisor, Nancy Surles, nominated Dwayne for the Career Achievement Award in Public Safety and Service. Her nomination coupled with Dwayne's excellent service gave cause for Dwayne to be awarded the certificate. During the awards ceremony, it was learned that Dwayne has 27 years with Waynesboro City. He started out as an employee, promoted to a supervisor, and now he's the Director of Parks and Recreation. Through this commitment, he has been very instrumental in making Waynesboro a destination city. One of our slogans is, "Where good nature comes natural." We have two major highways that pass through our city. One is, both of them east-west highways, Route 250, that passes through the heart of our city. It allows everyone access to our city. So when you're coming into 250, you can do that. We have one other major highway that passes east-west, that's Interstate 64. Motors have a four-mile bypass at speeds of 70 to 70-plus miles an hour through our city. Dwayne and his staff have helped create an environment where a reason for motors to get off the interstate, spend some time with us. People around this country visit Waynesboro for our hospitality, our river, our parks, greenway, and most recently, the Blue Ridge Tunnel Trail. Dwayne has put people and their health at the forefront of his mission, while at the same time, he is very persistent and always improving and creating opportunities for our residents and guests to enjoy our natural settings. Dwayne has a passion for the outdoors. Because of this passion, and his leadership, he has helped the Blue Ridge Tunnel from the concept to a destination spot here in Waynesboro. A couple of facts that became known during this ceremony was, our greenway has attracted 65,000 users. The Blue Ridge Tunnel Trail over, that was just opened up, has brought in over 160,000 visitors, and it was opened up during the COVID pandemic when everything else was shut down. People across this great nation came to realize, life is short and nature matters. Dwayne, I don't know where you are in here tonight, but congratulations. We appreciate your hard work, and it's an honor to have you representing the city of Wayne. And that's all I have for matters from mayor. Next item is matters from council members. Does anyone have?
You know I do. I don't know if anybody else says. Updates, if you follow along, the, either the CDC site or the Waynesboro section of the Virginia Department of Health COVID site, the, we're still green, still seeing my face up here, which is good news. There's a statistical anomaly, if anybody's looked at it recently. Suddenly, in the last week, we've had over, I think, 250 cases apparent. But if you notice, Augusta County in the same time has had negative 250 cases. So, the presumption is that these are cases that are reclassified, that they were called Augusta County cases at some point in the past, and they were catching up and reclassifying them as Waynesboro cases. There does not seem to be any evidence of a real increase, but it's hard to, you know, sort of verify that with that much statistical noise going on. So, stay tuned. Hopefully, things will continue to stay down, but that's just a little hard to look past when you see a sudden spike in those numbers on the Virginia Department of Health site. There have been areas in the country that have started to see increased numbers again. Albemarle County is again in the yellow. I said two weeks ago that Bath County and Fluvana County were yellow as well. They have returned to green. So, hopefully, that means that central Virginia in general is going to be calming down, but it, you know, those counties have returned to green. So, that's the good news there. Again, congratulations to Dwayne. I've had the pleasure to work with him with the Parks and Rec Commission, and also a direct shout out to those folks getting ready for the Park to Park Half Marathon this coming weekend. So, there's still time to sign up if any of you would like to join me in running the Park to Park again. It is a great race, and we're looking forward to hopefully good weather and a good race. So, that's all I got. Thank you much.
All right. Here are no other matters from council. We come to item number seven. Item number seven is to consider, no, 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 we've got to go to item number six.
Okay, I was about to say.
I've got to hear myself. Item number six is to consider adopting our consent agenda. Has everyone had a chance to look at the consent agenda? Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Shore. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five of. Thank you all very much. Now, item number seven. Item number seven is to consider adopting a resolution providing for refunding of a series of 2010 general obligation bonds and the issuance of tax-exempt, bank-qualified general obligation bonds in an estimated maximum principal amount of $1,565,000. Mr. McCormick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, members of council. Each year, as the city staff prepares the budget, we review the debt amortization schedules to see if there are any bonds that are eligible for refinance. One of the ones, or it's actually two separate bonds, that came up this year were the 2010A and 2010B issuance. Those were issued for general fund, sewer fund, and stormwater fund debt in 2010. The current average coupon on those bonds is about 5.76% interest. They can be refinanced for about 2.35% interest. The outstanding balance on those loans is a little over $1.8 million, and then there's about $300,000 in unspent proceeds in the sewer fund that can be applied towards that, which brings you to about the $1.56 million. The net present value of cash flow savings will be about $417,000, and annually, it'll be about $52,000 per year, and that'll be spread across those three funds, and the net present value benefit would be 8.57%. Y'all have any questions? I would be happy to answer them now.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Huff Seder. Is there a second? This requires a roll call vote. Ms. Wardle, can you give us a roll call vote?
Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Senator Short?
Aye.
Senator Allen?
Aye.
Senator Ross Seder?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries five of. Item number eight is to hold a public hearing and consider adopting free appropriation orders in the amount of $2,490,000, $2,490,000, and provide sufficient funds for the construction of Sunset Park located at the former landfill off of Sixth Street. Mr. Jones?
Mayor, members of council, it's my pleasure to be here this evening. First of all, thank you, Mayor Henderson, for those kind remarks, and I really do appreciate your attendance the other night. It was quite meaningful to have you and Assistant City Manager Todd there as well. So, just going to give you a brief update, a little bit of history of Sunset Park as a project, and answer any questions you may have. This is a recent shot of Sunset Park. At the top of the capped landfill, there is the road that goes up, the little dots in front, or the capped gas wells, and you can also see the view to the Blue Ridge Mountains looking towards Afton and Charlottesville. The park encompasses about 100 acres and is sort of triangular shaped. It heads back or heads east on 250. This is 250. The Croze Tunnel is up here. Of course, this is the top of Afton, and the Jones Hollow Reservoir. We do have plans. Ultimately, we'd hope to connect a lot of these resources together, and Sunset is one key point in that process. In 2014, we were fortunate to get a small grant to hire the students at the Community Design Assistance Center. They came up with an overall master plan that looked at a variety of things, and that's what we moved forward with in 2014. In 2017, we hired Wiley Wilson and LPDA that came up with, refined the conceptual plan, and also has taken it to the point of engineering plans. So, just to give a recap, you can see where this kind of gets all the way down to here. This is just the eastern limits of the city of Waynesboro, and this is the tip of that, and you can see some of those trails laid in there as well. This is a close-up here of what is going on at the top of the mountain, and then bike trails and hiking trails in the non-capped area. So, in that wooded area in the back, there are no, there was never any trash in that area. So, again, we have about 90% design plans for this park as we have proceeded through the process. One of the things, one of the components of the plan was improving the entrance. It's to recycler, it's also the current refuse area. We think there's some improvements we can make at this point, or at the early stages, we would co-habitat that area, co-occupy that area, but there's some improvements as far as how you would get to that site, sort of soften the area as you enter into the park, so that it would look not quite like a landfill and a little bit more like a park. We would keep the old scale house. The scales would be removed. There would be traffic, two-way traffic around that building, some landscaping and some different areas, some striping. A lot of that has to do with safety and security of folks coming in and out of the park, as well as when the trash trucks, because they still occupy that area. We also, a third component of this project is the access road. Some of you may have been up there, and the road is really, it was designed initially, when it was capped in 2003, to have a road and to potentially have a park. It's one of the reasons it was capped years ago or leveled off, but the road is eroded away. We did receive a VDOT grant, a recreational access grant of about $350,000 to upgrade that road, and as part of that process, we have some stormwater improvements that need to be made along some of the areas there, because we're adding impervious surfaces to some parts of the park. So, the real sort of meat of the park is really happening up top. There's lots going on. We have paved parking area in here. There's also an auxiliary parking area down here. What really attracts us to this park, and a lot of folks to this park, is really the magnificent views that are really 360 degrees at the top of there, and it really is unlike anything around. Some of the other things, again, the overlooks, there are some designed areas here with overlooks, different areas. There is a restroom, restroom here, also a pavilion. Not a lot of landscaping, because we want to take advantage of the views, but we do think it's important to sort of soften some of those edges of that. So, some paving, some landscaping, some overlooks, a restroom, and also a pavilion. Again, the overlooks are really what draws most of the people, and this is a view. If you haven't had a chance to see the sunset up there, this is overlooking the road as it coming up. Comes up to the top of the landfill, and it is quite spectacular. We are, we were, we had written a grant along with the Shenandoah Valley Bike Coalition to look at the trails. Again, one component of this park is to have mountain bike and hiking trails. We actually have had this grant for about two years, getting to this point. They were here this past week, so these folks are from the International Mountain Bike Association. We are fortunate to have them here, professional trail builders, and I think they did a fabulous job. They had some community stakeholder events, and this is sort of their map. It's a little hard to see. We just got this last week, so this showing the trails and a variety of different trails, and they really tried to design the trails. There are just a few sections that are sort of expert, but most of it is something you could do with your grandkids, what they call flow trails, the terrain of the park. Got about four and a half miles of trails, which we think is pretty spectacular for this site. And again, they hosted a get-together, a Stokes Meeting, for people that had questions and different things, and again, the Shenandoah Valley Bike Coalition was instrumental in helping us get that. It was a $30,000 grant that we had no match in, so we were fortunate to work with them. A little bit about maintenance up at the top. This is the main overlooked area. We have planned, and in fact, we have some sample meadows in the area, and then sort of smaller lawn areas that we think folks will come, enjoy, have a picnic, watch the sunset, maybe have ice cream up there, different things like that. But a lot of the area either would be forested or meadows, and those meadows, they're not maintenance-free, but they're certainly not cut every day or cut once a week. We still will service the restroom as we normally do all of our other parks. This is a shot of the shelter that we have picked out. We probably will not have the rock base, but this is a kit-type shelter, but it does fit into the design theme that we're looking for for Sunset. So, in early 2019, we worked with police, fire, and emergency services to develop a safety and security plan. We certainly recognize that this park is unlike anything we have, based on its location, based on its terrain, based on the activities that are involved. So, we were very, in the early process, involved police, fire, and rescue. We came up with some different key takeaways that we think will mitigate any potential problems. One is restricting night access. We will have automatic gates that close just after sunset. If they close behind you, we will drive up. There'll be a sensor. The gates will open. Cars will exit, and the gate will close behind them. We'll also restrict access during inclement weather. As much as we love sledders at Ridgeview Park, I'm not sure that the capped landfill and its slopes are the best for snow sledding, so we will simply close the park during inclement weather. That'll also reduce overall maintenance, and so we will not be having snow removal immediately up there. Also, extraction points in case of emergencies. We realize that if potentially someone twists an ankle on a trail or a bike or something, that we could be able to get with those folks with emergency services to extract them in case there's a serious injury. Also, security cameras for the shelter restroom facilities. We're also looking at Wi-Fi cameras that are on key parking lots, just so we can keep an eye. Again, it is a little bit out of the way as far as a park goes, and really, that's sort of a vandalism, and also auto-locking restroom doors to limit vandalism. Some of our restrooms in different facilities are vandalized, but we need power for those, and so having those doors auto-lock, again, similar to the gates. You'd have a panic bar to get out if you were locked in, but they would close at night. Also, detailed signage on the trails alerting the public to potential hazards, as well as what to do in a case of emergency. Some of the things were also possible storage of a UTV down at the Baylor Building in case we had an event or something that was going on there, that that could be used potentially in case of an emergency. Also, we're also looking at a QR code for the trail kiosks and signs, and so you've seen sort of the blue phones on college campuses. We, a lot of college campuses are getting away from those. Most people have their phones. They can download an app. They'll have a GPS locator, so if they were on the trail by themselves, got turned around, got lost, they could use that app to work themselves out or potentially call 911. Also, trail markers to aid users and first responders in locating individuals. We have a couple of ideas. I'll show you in a minute. And also, clear signage to delineate surrounding private property. We do realize there are some private property around there. We certainly want to be respectful of the neighbors, and, but we think we can do that with signage and trail markings and those types of things and accomplish a happy medium. I mentioned the Ragged Mountain Reservoir uses these type trail markers. There's the mountain man, the owls, and the concept behind it is, if someone is lost, they say, "Well, I am 100 or so feet from the mountain man," and so they can easily be located on the trails, as opposed to, "I passed mile two or four, or I saw a blue sign." So, we think this is a creative way. It blends in with the nature and the natural landscape that's back there. So, we love this idea and hope to employ that. And with that, I'll take any questions that anyone may have from council.
I've got a question. I think you addressed it somewhat. We have heard from a neighboring property owner. Is there a buffer zone of any distance between the neighbors and the trails and other activities?
So, we, the folks that were here from Imba that were looking at the trails, they literally were here last week, so we haven't gotten their full report. We've gotten a preliminary map. We're also going to find the actual property line. I know that sounds a little crazy, but it's a little hard to survey in that area based on there. They had RGIS, they had a marker, so they stayed off the property with the trails. There is a house that's relatively close, and those trails will pull back from there, but there are surrounding property that potentially, without a sign, folks could just wander there and not really know where they are. But the trails are fully designed on city right-of-way property that we know of now. Again, we're going to confirm that in the field. We're going to confirm that with a surveyor, so that we know that the trails are actually laid out on city right-of-way. And again, with the trail situation on a bike, most of those folks would start at the top and sort of roll through those trails, and we're certainly going to encourage that in the trail building process, because we don't want erosion. We don't want people making their own trails. So, one would hope that they would stay on the trails and use those trails and sort of, again, they're a flow trail, so it's sort of switchbacks that take you down to the bottom, and then you can bike back up. But we're certainly going to look at all of that as we get further in the project. We have worked with Waynesboro PD. It actually is faster for them to survey our parks without the gate, so they can get in, use a spotlight if necessary, as opposed to stopping, unlocking a gate. By the time it takes to unlock the gate, perpetrators are potentially gone. We think this park's a little different in the fact that it is somewhat remote. Again, we plan to have cameras, so we can monitor that, but we hope that that situation with the gates closing and opening will keep people from going up basically after dark. I mean, it's obviously called Sunset. It will be open past Sunset, so, but at some point, obviously, we'll have curfew and signage, so that folks know that this is not, unless there's an event, that you wouldn't necessarily, the sunset is not going down at midnight. So, after that point, you should, you know, vacate the premises, so. Absolutely.
All right. You got the sign-in sheet from the back? I hereby open the public hearing. When you come up, if you would, please say your name and your, where you live. And for those that are here to speak tonight, we have a four-minute rule. You've got four minutes to give us what you want to give us. The green light will come on. It will run for three and a half minutes. It will turn yellow. When the yellow light comes on, we ask that you start winding it up, and when the red light comes on, respect everyone else in here and kind of step away from the mic. It's all yours.
Thank you. Kevin Chisnall, 235 Elizabeth Avenue, longtime resident of Ward C. I'm going to make mine very short and sweet. I think that two-and-a-half-million-dollar park for essentially $125,000 is a pretty good deal, and it's a beautiful spot. I see it in the morning, see the sun rising over it, and it's beautiful. I can't wait to get up there and see some sunsets. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Randall Wolf.
Hey, who is that, Tom?
Randall Wolf.
Good evening. First, I just want to say, I love the, I want to celebrate everybody who came out tonight. Whether we agree or disagree, it's great to see the turnout. My name's Randall Wolf. I live in Stewart's Draft. I'm on the board of the Shenandoah Valley Bicycle Coalition, and I also operate Bike Box of the Blue Ridge and the Boys and Girls Club here. I know how valuable getting people on bikes is and kids, and this park is truly unique, a truly unique opportunity for Waynesboro. It is not like any park that you have elsewhere. It really is natural when you get back in the woods. Those four-and-a-half-mile trails will be available to hikers, bikers, and about probably a mile or over a mile of those trails will be available for people who are disabled in hand cycles. So, it's very inclusive. It's on the side of town where there aren't any parks, and I think that's a key point. It's at low cost for the residents of Waynesboro. The grants that the coalition organized to get the design done cost you nothing, and we had over 40 people come out last Thursday to hear about the park, and many of them are ready to volunteer to do maintenance work on those trails and things like that, that we organize at parks throughout the valley. If you want to stay competitive, Stanton has a park much like this. Harrisonburg has a park much like this. Charlottesville has a park much like this, where people can get out and hike and bike and enjoy real outdoors, not sort of a paved greenway. It's a very different experience for people. Waynesboro has a big challenge, just like the rest of Stanton. Waynesboro has a big challenge, just like the rest of Stanton, Waynesboro, and Augusta County does, with childhood obesity. You're three times the national average. We need to get kids moving, and we need to give them access to the outdoors. If I was a student in elementary school and had an opportunity to take a half a day and go out to that park where I was last week, that would be really exciting to me, to learn about nature, to see it, to hear it, to experience it. You can't get that in the other parks you have. This would be a great learning opportunity for them. There's a Saw mountain bike team that's been operational for about five or six years now. So every middle school and high school age student, homeschoolers included, can race or learn how to mountain bike race on that team. This park would be a great training ground for that, better than Montgomery Hall Park, because this park has trails that are designed truly for beginners, and primarily are beginner and intermediate trails. I don't have much else to say, other than the community is ready for this and to support it, and I hope you support it. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Craig Scott.
We've been honored, members of our valuable city council, extremely. Craig Scott, Ward B., Armistead Road. I rise in dissent of the park for multiple reasons. It is not $125,000, it is over $2.5 million in costs. But it's not the cost itself. I love nature, I've hiked the Appalachian Trail, the Long Trail. We are blessed. We're above the 95% tile of parks around here. The money needs, we are in an opiate crisis and other crises in this community. Our great sheriff has not had a staff increase since 1978. Our valiant chief has not had, he needs more staff desperately. They're going to be now stretched further to cover that park. Our emergency services, our fire, our safety people, infrastructure can be all done. I've gone through the Treasury report, any project under $1 million, there's no documentation needed. So roads that are in disrepair, infrastructure that is decaying, et cetera, safety, maybe $10,000 for RISE. Rather than illuminating a few people, we can illuminate hundreds of children. Their vistas can be broadened in our glorious valley with pennies on the dollar. Its prioritization is the key. We have parks. Also, what's the environmental, what is the maintenance needed for those parks down the road? Erosion was talked about. Yes, we can have volunteers. Why not have volunteers at RISE, for example, where a child's mind is greater than any one park and could be extrapolated? I've always used this term, efficiency is compassion. We want to make every street safe for children to walk along and get their exercise, see their friends, not worry about, have their parents in a good quality of life, where its doors can actually be left open, like maybe when you and I were kids. This is the variable that is beyond our own imagination, quality of life with good services, that these valiant people that are underpaid and understaffed are needed, and infrastructure that is decaying. That's where these monies could be more readily and more efficiently, and therefore more compassionately spent. That will be permanent and long-lasting, and build a better reputation for Waynesboro than any park would do, because that only select a few patricians or whatever. I love to exercise, but I can exercise anywhere I want. I walk my neighborhood, I go to the dog park. There's 100 venues. It's discipline and expanding the mind, and it starts with children. But you want to have a quality of life where everybody can walk down the street and get their exercise even before going to any park, going to shopping, whatever. A myriad of life, life events that we all take for granted. That's about it. Thank you so much, and I appreciate your time. One and all.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Valerie Hancock.
I'm Valerie Hancock, and I live at 608 Sumter Road in Waynesboro. I think this is a great opportunity. This city needs more opportunities like this. This is tremendous. What this city doesn't need is to be spending the money on this. We need to find people who will donate, maybe get their name on the park, or a portion of it, or whatever, so that the money that is set aside by our federal government, which we all paid into already, it's really not free money, people. It's not free money. It's people, it's money that has already gone through three bureaucracies before it gets back to us. And we need to use that money to provide for the essentials in the city that aren't yet being handled well. And perhaps we are also concerned that our tax rate has kept going up and up. And of course, at the moment, our housing prices are going up and up, which sounds good, until we crash, and then I don't know where the tax rates will go. But I think we've got to be more conservative with the money that the federal government is allowing this community, and use it, use it for the things that are essential and not the big dreams. But I also think we ought to be working on big dreams, and I think we ought to be finding funds other places.
Thank you, Ms. Hancock.
David Henle.
Good evening, council. My name is David Henle. I live on the corner of Binford and Woodrow. I've been there for 20 years. I've also had the pleasure of educating a large number of Waynesboro young adults in the field of finance and economics as part of the award-winning Waynesboro Financial Literacy Program. One of the lessons I learned as a young man, that I taught to my students in the 20 years in the classroom, was when you get found money, that found money should be invested. I think it's a great rule. I think it's worked well for me, and I know it's worked well for a lot of people. I truly think that Sunset Park is an exceptional investment for this city. It's an investment for all of us residents who will get the ability to use it, but I also think it's even a stronger benefit for the economic development and additional benefit for bringing people to this community. Businesses, I know we have some business leaders here in the community, they'll benefit from the people who come here to use this exceptional park. We will see tax revenues from this park for the perpetuity of the park, which is the perpetuity of this community, because of the number of people who are going to be coming here. Oh, I can come here to fish, I can come here to mountain bike, I can come here to paddle, I can come here to hike. We've seen how more people are wanting and needing more outdoor activities, as pandemics pointed that out. You look at the growth of people in parks, it's gone up tremendously. The nice thing with this economically is the fact, we have very little cost for this, and it will continue to provide revenue for a long period of time. It will draw people to this particular area. Was at the presentation on the bike trails, one of the things that really impressed me, they're doing adaptive mountain biking up there. You know, this is to get the people who, veterans who have served, command, use the park. I think personally, it's an exceptional investment, and the city would be, well, I just think that it should be an investment we should make. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I apologize for this next name pronouncement. Robbie Kuykendall.
Is it Kirkendall?
It's K-U-I.
It's Kirkendall. It's spelled right, and it's pronounced Kirkendall, so. I apologize. I should have put it out phonetically for you. Hi, I'm Robbie Kirkendall. I live at 823 14th Street. Tonight, I'm here representing the Parks and Rec Commission, of whom I am a co-chair of, and I believe we have all of our members here except for maybe one. So we have, the majority of us are here. We're going to speak in support of this. We think it's a great idea. It'll be an asset for the city. Dwayne and his staff at Parks and Rec have done a wonderful job doing their due diligence, getting the right people in, looking at the pros and cons. And I think we're at that point where, yes, we need you, the city council, to make the appropriation for the funds and move forward with this. So again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Mark Russell.
Good evening. My name is Mark Russell. I'm a resident of Stanton, Virginia. I am a coach of the Saw Composite Mountain Bike Team, Saw being Stanton, Augusta, Waynesboro. Currently, we have student riders from Stewart's Draft, Riverheads, Buffalo Gap, Fort Defiance, and Stanton School Districts. We don't have any kids from Waynesboro. I would love to have kids from Waynesboro on my team, our team. I would love to have the opportunity to have a practice in Stanton, where we currently hold practices in Montgomery Hall Park one night a week, another night having practices here in Waynesboro, because it is a community. I think it's a great opportunity for the kids of Waynesboro to develop a love of mountain biking, which is an experiential sport. We do compete. We compete in the spring in the Virginia High School Mountain Bike League, and in the fall in the NICA Virginia League. But our kids don't have to race. They just develop a love of mountain biking, experiential sports that they'll take with them throughout the rest of their life. I think it's a great opportunity for that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Deanne Dozier.
Hello. I'm Dean Dozier. I live at 312 Village Drive. I have come back to Waynesboro, moved back into Waynesboro a couple of years ago, after being away many years ago, the '70s. I worked for the Waynesboro newspaper, so I'm familiar with Waynesboro. I love Waynesboro, and I love the valley. And I have mixed feelings about this park. I think it's a, I've spent my adult career writing about parks and wild places, hiking trails, canoe rivers. So in one sense, I'm very much in favor of the park. I love seeing the pictures of it. I love the idea. I just don't think that this recovery fund is designed to be used for this park. And I am wondering if there's any way, because I respect everybody's desire to have this park, it sounds great, if there's any way to appoint a task force to find ways to fund this park from donations. I'll donate money for this park. Donations, maybe people can write grants in their wills toward the park. I don't know how. I just don't think that this is the wisest use of these funds, and maybe not even permitted by the funds. I see where there's written justification required, and recipients must submit as part of the regular reporting to Treasury on how these funds are to be used if they're not specified in the final rule. And so I wonder if we are allowed to see this justification for using these funds for the park. I think of things, and I'm sure you all have more familiarity with the details, but I think of things like, I heard that the police department has not added any staff since 1978, and that there are like 14 positions open. Do we have the funds to fund police? We need police in this town. We need safety and security from our police. I noticed the meal tax in Waynesboro is 7%. People are hurting after the pandemic. Restaurants are hurting, a lot of businesses are hurting. Could they be alleviated with the lower meal tax, or could people have lower sewer water fees? And I don't know all the ways that this money might be used to help individual people. But, so in other words, I'm speaking for the park, but against using these funds for the park. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Forrest Jones.
Before I start, could I ask that all council people and people in this room, look up this website, so that I can, you can be informed of what I'm going to say before...
We're not going to be able to look it up tonight while we're here.
It's on your phone. You can do it right now.
But we're in a public hearing.
It's real easy. Anybody that's in the audience, if you want to look up this website, please do. Thank you. My name is Forrest Jones. I live on York Drive in Waynesboro, Virginia, and I've been a citizen here for 56 out of the 66 years of my life. I've gone to school here. I know some people on the city council. Whereas I know the theory is good, and it looks good on paper, you have a responsibility to everybody in this room and everybody outside of this room to spend the money wisely. I'm not saying that the park's a bad idea, but there are contingencies that you haven't even brought up with, Dwayne. How are you going to get the water up there? You're going to have to truck it up, or are you going to put plumbing in? Has that been a factor?
Ms. Jones, could you keep your comments addressed to us and not anybody else, okay?
Thank you. Per this website that I'm going to refer to, it is giving an analysis of our drinking water from Waynesboro, Virginia. The results of this test, and it's done on a regular basis, have toxins in it that are over 17 times the health limit through the EPA. That's just one of 16 different attributes that we're drinking in our water from the tap. I don't know how many filters can filter out chromium and radium. Do you? Before you spend a dime on anything else, you need to know that the services that you provide protect our citizens, me included, you included. If these are correct, and I do intend to get samples and send them off, but if these are anywhere close to correct, you've got a deep and serious problem in Waynesboro. And I suggest, if you don't want lawsuit after lawsuit from each individual person, that you table your vote for this wonderful project that you have in mind, and first take into consideration the health, welfare of your community that you were elected to represent. Thank you, and have a nice start.
I'm Kurt Lilly. I live on Skyland Avenue. When you were talking about the budget months ago, it sounded like you were cutting things to the bone. The city manager wanted to hire people but couldn't, and, you know, they needed more money. Now we've found $2 million for this park, and I'm trying to understand, is this park $125,000, or is it over $2 million? It's a mystery to me now. Why don't we take that $2 million and retire city debt? That will save a fortune, will allow you to pay for other things that you'd like to do. You want to build this on a landfill. I'm not sure that's a good idea. There's been plenty of housing tracts that have tried it, and plenty of lawsuits that have followed. We already have plenty of parks in the city, so I'm against this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn Pollan.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council, city staff, thank you for... Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council, city staff, thank you for having this public hearing tonight. My name is Len Pullen. I live in Lynnhurst. I am the Chair of the Center for Cold Waters Restoration. I'm also a member of the Virginia Museum of Natural History Foundation Board, and I was the founder of the Virginia Fly Fishing Festival 22 years ago here on the South River. 22 years ago, and I'm here to say this, I don't see this as an expense. This is an investment, as Dave Henel had said earlier, but I don't know that you really see the value of this true investment. 22 years ago, when we started the Virginia Fly Fishing Festival, nobody would fish on that river, nobody. And I can't tell you how many people locally came to me and said, who's going to come here to fish in this river? Some of the folks here on council said that back then. I had a lot of resistance about that. 22 years later, we've got a trophy trout stream down here. 22 years later, the Virginia Museum of Natural History is prepared to build a 25,000-square-foot branch campus on the banks of that river. Recently, there was a stream cleanup exercise, and that day, there was a couple from Richmond that was in the river with their waders on, cleaning the river out. When asked, why were you here from Richmond to do this? So we come up here and fish all the time, and we wanted to take care of this river. On that same day, there was another fellow from Stanton that was in that river cleaning it up. There was a family of five, five and a half, the mother was actually pregnant with their next child, from Lynchburg, walking down the Greenway. And when asked, what are you doing here? They said, you know, we heard about the Greenway. We heard about Stella, Bella, and Ella's. We wanted to come down here and experience this. A couple of years ago, I did a study on the possibility of doing a mountain bike jamboree here in Waynesboro to try to bring some, you know, outside revenue into the community, but also as a fundraiser for the local Rotary Club, which I'm a member and president of. And I was really amazed at the industry that mountain biking is today. There's a whole league of different level of mountain bikers that travel the country to come to these type of events. I can envision in Waynesboro with a park like this, having an international, or at least a national or regional, bike jamboree that would incorporate all levels of skills, all levels and ages. You could also integrate into that a street biking exhibition through the wine tasting country. It'll be...that'll generate a destination here in Waynesboro. About a month ago, the Virginia Living Magazine had an article, or actually it was an ad from the city of Waynesboro that claimed to...or I'm sorry, the city of Harrisonburg, that claimed to be the center of outdoor recreation in the valley. I challenged that. Waynesboro is truly the center of that. And I can tell you, you invest in this park, we get a mountain bike program in here, this will become a destination. People will travel from all over. With the Fly Fishing Festival, we had people from Italy travel to that event. We had people from California, Michigan, Florida, people that I spoke with personally. You'll have that here with this type of event as well. And they won't just come for a weekend. They'll come throughout the year, which is what's happening right here on the river. This is the last, or a big component, of building that outdoor recreation industry, and this is an investment that will pay, and it will allow you to buy or pay for new policemen and increase your teacher salaries. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chris Hamilton.
Good evening, council members. My name is Chris Hamilton. I'm from Harrisonburg, live in Rockingham County. I come in support of the Sunset Park construction. My perspective is that I'm retired from marketing company, and I have now three grandchildren that are probably the most important thing in my life. And to see them growing up mountain biking is just moving to me. I watch them ride. I watch them enjoy the outdoors, and they can't get enough of it. And I would encourage you to seriously consider that this is good for the children. It's been stated several different ways about that tonight, so I won't get...I won't talk too much about that. But this is good for the kids. They enjoy it. It's good for them, their camaraderie, and it gives them a place to go outside. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter DeVries.
I'm Dr. Peter DeVries. I'm a pediatrician in Waynesboro. I'm one of the partners at Valley Pediatric Group. Been here, been there since 2008. I live in Afton. I take care of a lot of families in this area and a lot of children. I wanted to talk about the health aspect, not just obesity. That's obvious that we're struggling with diabetes and obesity that just keeps increasing in our area. And the other thing is mental health. I'm seeing two to three times the amount of anxiety and depression that I've ever seen over the past few years, and that includes all my partners. Part of that is...is a lot of kids staying inside more, a lot of kids, the whole cell phone use, video games. Trying to get kids outside, out of their home has been more challenging. A lot of kids also do not like traditional sports, like basketball or baseball, or where you have to be like the best to make the team. There's a lot of kids who can't make the team, and it's pretty discouraging, and they don't have another avenue to kind of express themselves with exercise. I teach biking at a very young age as a way to get outside and keep the families together and to...and keep them fit and keep them off the television and off the cell phone, which is a monumental problem. And the overriding concern is, well, I don't have anywhere to take my kids to do that. And part of that is safety-wise, so part of it's worrying about getting hit by a car in town, and part of it is, when you're learning how to ride like a bike on trails, you need actually trails to do that, and there aren't any here. There's a reason why there's no kids in Waynesboro on that Saw team is because we don't have anywhere in our area to do that. When I suggest areas when I'm talking to families and I'm educating them on where to go, like families who make a lot of money, they can go to Charlottesville, Stanton, to go to those parks there in Harrisonburg. But I take care of a lot of families who don't have that money, and they don't have the time because of their hours with work, and something close and easy access that would be five minutes would be...would be amazing. And our practice fully supports this project, and I think it would be an amazing investment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ryan Fitzgerald.
I live at 548 Pine Avenue, Waynesboro, Virginia. I recently moved back because of the COVID pandemic. But something I noticed while I was away, my dad calls me one day and he says, hey, like, I'm out walking. And I was like, what are you talking about? Like, you never do that. And it was because you guys built the Greenway. And things like that, I think, are beneficial to the community health because you build a park like that and it might attract other people who are into the mountain biking scene or hiking scene, and it'll really bring those people out of their house. And like the doctor just said, it'll benefit their health and their anxiety and depression. As far as investment, I think that the tourism aspect would really benefit Waynesboro. Like Mr. Pullen said about the Fly Fishing Festival and whatnot, I've met people from Richmond multiple times who have said they come to Waynesboro specifically for fly fishing in the South River. And like when I was growing up as a kid, you didn't go to the South River, you know? Like, there was always jokes about the mercury and eating the fish and whatnot. But I think this would be a great investment for the community, and I hope that, you know, I'm in support of it, and I hope that it gets built. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mary Glass.
My name is Mary Glass, and I live at 1424 Fifth Street, which is directly adjacent to the Sunset Park area. I'm in favor of this, just from a standpoint of connecting the community, the mountain bike community in this area. Like many people have said, there's places to go in Harrisonburg, there's places to go in Charlottesville, but there's not really anywhere right in this area that is close by that you can just like go after work, go for a social ride. There's social rides in those other places, so I think it would bring people together. I think people could ride there and then use the bike lanes that Waynesboro does have to go downtown, get food and drinks. I think that would be good for the community and the local businesses. Yesterday, just yesterday, me and my husband and another couple, we're members of Cambic and SVBC, we did trail maintenance at Walnut Creek, and we built a trail out there. Mountain bikers build most of the trails that people bike on and hike on and use. And then afterwards, the four of us went to Dr. Hose and spent $100. We got something to eat. We got a couple of drinks, you know, just hung out, and I think people would do that if they were coming to this park, and then they would be able to use those bike lanes, go downtown, get something to eat, getting something to drink. I do enjoy or like the fact that it would be family-friendly for people to get out and enjoy nature, for kids to be able to ride there. You know, with like a jamboree or with races potentially, you know, it would bring people from out of the area to this area. I think...I think it would be really positive, and so I'm in favor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Addie Hopwell.
I should have one for her, but I'll speak for her.
Phil Klon.
Say, by the way, will walk-in comments feel around this only group list? What we heard about the meeting today? Just wondering.
Yes, you can still...
You can add right there.
The list is right there. The list is right here. You can still sign up. Yes.
Hello. My name is Phil Klon, and I'm in Ward Seed, live on Sherwood Avenue here in Waynesboro. First, I'd like to thank Dwayne Jones and the staff. I think they did a great job on the presentation, and I know it's a lot of work to put everything together. Even though I feel we can benefit from Sunset Park, I don't feel this is the best use for funds at this time. We should set priorities on how we spend our monies, such as infrastructure and staffing our police department. Just like spending money in our own households, we don't buy frivolous things before we put food on the table, make sure we have a roof over our heads, and clothes on our back, and a vehicle to drive. I feel we need to make sure we have the necessities covered before we spend extra money for this park. And don't get me wrong, I'd really love to see the park. As everybody...or several people here tonight, they've made a lot of good points. There's exercise for the young and the old, fantastic views, and it's a great connections to other trails and areas, such as the Appalachian Trail, the Blue Ridge Tunnel, and our own Greenway. But let's make sure we have a source of funds to build the park after we take care of the necessities for the city, or like Dean suggested, maybe find ulterior sources for the funds, because I really do see the park as being a benefit. People have brought up a lot of good points, but hey, I think having a well-staffed police department is also important. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. ...
David Robinett.
Who is that?
David Robinett. Apologize if I messed that name up.
Good evening, council members. My name is David Robinett, and while I currently hail from Glen Allen, I grew up in Waynesboro, and I return every weekend to take care of my parents who live at 1820 North Talbot Place. I also represent two cycling clubs, Augusta Cycling Club, which runs the Torta Valley out of Waynesboro every year, and James River Racing. We support the building of Sunset Park. It's an excellent way to reclaim the public lands, to give these areas for our citizens to hike and exercise and otherwise enjoy our natural beauty. As a majority of the expense is covered by federal funding, the tax burden on Waynesboro citizens would be relatively light. Reclaiming this land for our use and enjoyment, and for the enjoyment of our children, would be a fitting victory for all of us that had to look at the scar of the mountain for so many years while we were growing up. I'd also like to reiterate Mr. Wolf's comment about trying to be competitive with other cities that have parks like this. And investing in parks like this would help bolster our reputation and our economy as we continue to be both a draw and a home for those who appreciate the natural beauty of our Blue Ridge Mountains. So I encourage you to vote yes to the Sunset Park project.
Thank you, sir.
Peter Van Acker.
My name is Peter Van Acker. I live on Walnut Avenue. I think it's appropriate that we're meeting today on the 25th. Tomorrow, the 26th, is the 200th birthday of Frederick Law Olmsted, the dreamer who helped create Central Park, Stanford University, the U.S. Capitol grounds, Niagara Falls, Prospect Park in Brooklyn, among just a few of the places that he created over his lifetime. Certainly, I'm sure people at those times were to question the value of investing in Central Park in New York City. I think that question has been answered. For decades, the city was known...the city of Waynesboro was known as the home of DuPont and the gravel pit landfill that loomed over the community. The gravel pit has another chapter yet to be written as Sunset Park. With public and private efforts, Waynesboro has made investments in our community that have paid dividends and improved the quality of life and that bring in tourists. A few of those, the Greenway has been mentioned, the South River Trout Stream, River Fest, volunteer effort that has become a fixture in the city, bringing people from all over the state. The Wayne Theater has helped revitalize our Main Street downtown and brings people in every week. The Museum of Natural History will further enhance our reputation and the draw to Waynesboro. And our parks serve the community by providing neighborhood and visitor access, outdoor space and activities. Sunset Park can be the capstone of our park system and can draw people to our downtown. It can provide the best views of our city and provide recreation space to picnickers, birders, nature lovers, walkers, runners, and bikers. It can connect Waynesboro more closely to the Shenandoah National Park, the Blue Ridge Parkway, and the Appalachian Trail. It is an investment that will pay dividends. The question is, will the City Council do what it takes to write a new chapter for the city of Waynesboro? I hope the answer is yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Matt Hopwell.
You're coming with two voices tonight.
I'm coming with one very powerful one and then myself. Good evening. My name is Matt Hopwell. I live in Fisherville. I've been a resident of Waynesboro and Augusta County area for almost all my entire life. I am a mountain biker. I am here in support of Sunset Park and the opportunities that this park has to provide for not only residents here, but the residents within the state of Virginia and possibly nationally. I bought my first mountain bike from Cycle Recycle, right down the road, and it's no longer there. I'm currently wearing a shirt from Black Dog that's in Stanton. My daughter is wearing a camp, cutaway camp shirt that's in Augusta County, in Charlottesville. What if we had Waynesboro on our shirt? What if we were able to represent our city in a way that we haven't thought about it before? When we go biking as a family, we take day trips. We go out and explore different cities. We explore different areas, and we don't go out and ride and then just come home. Trust me, we get very hungry. I get thirsty, and I like to sit back and enjoy. We get to experience new areas, try new restaurants, try new breweries, and it all goes back into the economy. A lot of talk is about the maintenance. I've done maintenance at Montgomery Hall Park, Pocahontas State Park, Massanutten, all because I want to see it. I want to see it grow. I want somebody to follow me in a trail and say, this is a great place and I want to come back. So it, I think it is a very important investment into the community, into our children, into the residents, current residents right now. Picked something up when we heard, uh, speak about, uh, our Parks Direct League. He said, Waynesboro's motto, and I might get it wrong, is good nature comes natural. Let's take something, enjoy this natural beauty that we have and continue to use it and make it better. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Bill Albertson.
Thank you. So I'm not much of a public speaker, but I'm a speaker, but I hope I can get my point across. So I recently retired last fall.
Can you say your name again?
I'm sorry, Bill Albertson.
Thank you, sir.
I live on Westover Drive, just outside Waynesboro city limits. So I retired last, uh, October and one of the things I was worried about before I retired is what I was going to do with all this extra time. And I'm a hiker and a bit of a street biker and I had some interest in mountain biking and I went ahead and bought a bike and went to trails. I've been to many trails throughout the area and it's just been a very good experience for me. Keeps me active, keeps me out of the house, away from my wife. Uh, uh, good and busy and I just wanted to relay that, that it's, I've been very, very happy to, uh, have discovered that and enjoyed that. And I spent a fair amount of time in Stanton at Montgomery Hall and I envision this park to be similar to that. Not, not super difficult, nice and easier for an older fellow like me and family with kids and such. Uh, so I support it and I hope you folks will too.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is that Jenny Wilson? J E and a Jerry Wilson?
Jerry.
There's two names here. One's a.
My name's Jerry Wilson. I live at 100 Guilford Lane in Waynesboro, Virginia. Uh, I too think that the park is good, but we need to find another way to finance it, I believe. Uh, our police departments, uh, we have roads that need repair and infrastructure. Uh, I do believe that funds should be used in a different way than what the park would be. Uh, I believe there is, with what I've heard from people in here, there's probably plenty of people that would donate to that park to get it open. And I believe that that's the way we should do it. Thank you, thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Peter Wong.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilors. My name is Pete Wong and, uh, I live on D Street. And, uh, it's just a, an awesome feeling to be welcomed here in Waynesboro, coming all the way from the Philippines. And, uh, I'm proud to say that I'm having, having taken my oath of allegiance in October of 2020, I'm now an American citizen. And I'm, and, uh, I've been welcomed here in the city. I've got great friendly neighbors there on the corner of Kirby Avenue and D Street. And, uh, praise the Lord indeed for bringing us here. My wife and I are missionaries with Advancing Native Missions. We, uh, uh, work there at the mission office in Afton, but come home here, uh, to Waynesboro every evening. And so we, uh, we did notice that since we came in 2013 to live here, first as tenants and then later as first-time homeowners, uh, there were so, there were fewer people then. That was just nine years ago. I don't know if you're noticing the traffic on the streets. I think that's a good indication that the population is growing. And, uh, with the population growing, I'm afraid that, uh, a lot of the laws right now, especially, uh, traffic laws are being violated, especially with a lot of red light, uh, red lighting cars and vehicles. I'm surprised really that there were so much of that I would catch. And not only that, I've been to a school board meeting one time and so many parents just complaining about their kids being bullied also. And I don't know if our current law enforcement people are capable of, of really getting to aid citizens who are, are being abused or taken advantage of. But I believe, uh, if we come, come behind our sheriffs and our, our police department and fund them some more, that they could get 14 more policemen. Remember, with or without the park, our population here at Wayne, in Waynesboro is continuing to grow. And with a bigger population, we'll have a, a problem, a law and, law enforcement problem in our hands. So I love parks too, but I believe we need to prioritize the safety and security of our residents here in Waynesboro. And the only way we could do that is we would increase the number of, of police officers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Herman Wells.
Herman Wells, 551 South Magnolia Avenue here in Waynesboro. I'm fortunate to have had many conversations with city council members on a range of topics important to the city of Waynesboro. There are two city council members in particular who have shown a great deal of kindness and patience in the past by taking time out of their busy schedule to explain their view on agenda items and initiatives important to the city and its residents. I always walk away from these conversations with an understanding. In essence, I see the opposite side of an initiative. Understanding does not always lead to agreement, but it does ensure a level playing field and all chips on the table mindset when, between city leaders and those they lead. Now I find myself at a crossroads. For the first time since becoming more involved in city business, I cannot understand why our city leaders are considering building another park in our community. This action does not make any sense on any level to me. With six parks and six recreational facilities and four more areas in the works, how many more recreation areas do we need? So let's be clear on the rules. Treasury did issue guidance clarifying that investments in parks, public plazas and other public outdoor recreation spaces may be responsive to the needs of disproportionately impacted communities by promoting healthier living environments. With as many parks as we have in this city, who is disproportionately impacted by not having enough public park space? Given the guidance from Treasury, is there a better use for these funds? Could we make improvements to Corner Springs Park, perhaps an improved walking and running path, fence to park in, add picnic areas, plant trees, fence off in areas so citizens can have a garden and grow food? That fits in the Treasury guidance. What about Rise? I've visited them several times and had deep conversations with them. They run an after-school program for youngsters. They help children with their homework and they enforce a keen standard and a set of values that many children only find in that venue. Can we provide a grant or low-cost loan assistance for the building in which the after-school program takes place? That fits in the Treasury guidance. How about our police? I understand we're 14 officers short in our sheriff's department. They're short on people and money. What have we done about that? Fixing staffing shortages and law enforcement and emergency services issues fits in the Treasury guidance. Based on Treasury guidance, we should be purchasing the most up-to-date communication systems available for our emergency operations centers and emergency response equipment. Have we done that? How about Shenandoah Valley Animal Services? Can we provide a grant for them? Help them upgrade their building? Certainly pets have helped comfort homebound people of all ages during the pandemic. How about helping our homeless shelter? All of that fits in the Treasury guidance. This is just a short list, many of which has been addressed to the city council in the last year when I participated and been here. This entire issue likened to a homeowner who wants to add an addition to his home but has a leaky and aging roof. For goodness sake, fix the roof before adding an addition to the house. When I was completing my MBA many years ago, one of my classes was in finance. An area covered was ethics and the professor who taught that class made a statement that has stuck with me still to this day. He said, "Just because you can, doesn't mean you should." If we, if we are spending this money, if we are spending this money because it needs to be spent or it's on the city's bucket list of nice things to have, is that the right thing to do with our government's money? Does that meet within the confines of our fiduciary responsibility for the taxpayers' money? Please vote no to ARPA or city funds for Sunset Park. Thank you.
Kyle Lawrence.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kyle Lawrence. I'm the executive director of the Shenandoah Valley Byside Coalition and just wanted to thank city staff for working with us on the trails plan layout for Sunset Park. Uh, really excited to be here talking about Sunset Park, of course, speaking in support of, uh, funding the park. And I will say, even though we are the Shenandoah Valley Byside Coalition, we're really focused on trails and access to the outdoors in general. And Sunset Park is such a great piece of public property that I think it's really important that folks can access it legally, especially residents of Waynesboro. And while tourism is a byproduct of a lot of our work, I think the most important part of these trails is what they are for the community and the park. So I think that people should have easy access to trails in the outdoors, it's part of their everyday life, whether it's recreation or transportation. Waynesboro area has a great greenway setup and I think Sunset Park would really help supplement that and we're really excited to see this happen. Um, and really for people who live near the park to be able to get there readily, easily, biking, walking, I think it's a incredible opportunity and you would be right in line with many other communities up and down the valley who are using ARPA funds to invest in their public parks as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mary Wilson.
Good evening, thank you. My husband and I moved here to this area, January 2020. What luck, but actually it was luck. We moved from Northern Virginia and we spent many times driving around this beautiful area, Shenandoah Valley, and we bought a home in Waynesboro one year ago. We appreciated that parks were open for most of that time. We all saw around the country, the tyrannical arm of government kicking out inner cities young people, playing basketball in cities, shutting parks, putting the yellow tape on park benches. So, uh, and the American Academy of Pediatrics stifling our children with masks so they couldn't breathe. So I hope, can't wait for the doctors to come out for children's freedom again. But I really, I love parks. Go to Ridgeview almost every day of the week. Um, but I'm just going to say, could I say what Herman said? I think that, uh, spending the money wisely, maybe finding other sources of funding for the park might be, um, a good way to try to go. Thank you so much for all y'all do and everybody else. Thank you.
Cheryl Carey.
Hello, Cheryl Carey, 820 Fairway Drive. And, um, I've listened to both sides and I was more, and, and I'm, I'm against spending money on the park. I'm not against the park. I'm against spending COVID money, period. COVID money, I feel, is for COVID. If, like the government says, they need more money, the federal government says they need more money. They haven't spent the 800 million as it is, but they need more. So I don't understand why we're even thinking about spending COVID money unless you think we're not going to need COVID money anymore and you're not going to have your hand out like every other state, every one of the local governments saying, "Let's spend this money quick, then we'll say we don't have any more." And you act like it's free money. It's not free money. We are in debt, this whole country, because we think we have an unlimited piggy bank. I love parks. We have tons of parks here. We have an obesity problem. That's because of food. It's not so much because of lack of exercise. People eat too much carbs. But, um, we need, we are crammed in. You're cramming in housing density so tight. We're getting more people, it's going to be a smaller area. As I said, I don't think this money should be spent on anything but COVID, but I know you're all going to go and spend it. So you can say it's gone and you're going to have your hand out, say you don't have any more. I want police protection. I don't want police being trained and then going to another city because they're paying more money. We pay nothing. They carry a gun. They put their lives on the line. They should be paid a decent salary. One that makes them stay here, makes them proud of this city and say, "This is where I want to stay. This is where I want to build my family and that, and the community, get them into the community." When you pay them, I couldn't live on what they make. I shop too much, but I still could not live. They don't make enough money. They are in the line. And it's not just the police, it's the firemen, it's the animal shelters. Eleven dollars an hour, I'm hearing? Come on, I couldn't go and do that work. That's mental. Yeah, it's not a police officer, but they need a living wage. We need to pay city workers a living wage so they can afford these housing that you're putting up. These aren't cheap housing you're putting up. These are expensive housing. Unless you're getting another federal grant, which is going to have you put HUD housing, Section 8s, whatever you want to call them, into hous, housing areas where people take all their, uh, life to get that one house they love and then you put a whole bunch of federal housing in there so you can get more tax money. We don't need to keep building, building all these franchises that every other city has, all these franchises you're cramming in and, um, high density. We need to support what we have here now. We need to support the city workers and the police. And I know you're going to spend the money, so that's where I think it should go. Park, great idea, not with COVID money. We have more important things to where our money should go and that should be for the police and support them.
Thank you, ma'am.
Dave Carey. Dave Carey.
Thank you. My name is David Carey. I live on Fairway Drive, uh, right here in Waynesboro. I've lived here for about six years and, uh, there's like six or seven parks in Waynesboro right now. Uh, I haven't been to them all yet. I still have to visit these parks we have. Um, this new park they're going to build up here, it's, it's wonderful. The presentation was great. I don't like the funding. I don't think we should be spending two and a half million dollars on a park that you could stand up there in that park and you can look down on Waynesboro and you could probably see all the parks in Waynesboro. Or you could turn around and you could see Skyline Drive and you could see the Blue Ridge Parkway. You might be able to see the Appalachian Trail and you could probably see the tunnel. Well, we have enough parks. We don't need another park. Now, it's, it's a great idea to have this park. I'm an avid biker. I, I'm, well, I used to be, I'm too old now, but I used to belong to the Potomac Peddlers and we used to go on 400-mile bike rides and I did a little bit of mountain biking too. Um, but nobody ever spent two and a half million dollars to give me a trail. We sort of made our own trails. It's, it's, it's a lot more exciting to mountain bike when you, when you don't have a trail. So, have to watch out for the trees. But at any rate, um, I, I don't think the park's a good idea, um, to, to be spending it. It's a good idea, but it's not a good idea to spend it with the money that came to us, you know, for the COVID and stuff like that. We have an underfunded police force. Now, everybody can benefit. force. Now, everybody can benefit from a well-funded police force, but only a few percent of the population can benefit from a mountain bike trail. Everybody can benefit from a police force. So we need to fund these people and we need to get a little more safety in this town. About a year ago, I was driving down Tiffany. Does everybody know where Tiffany is by Martins? I'm driving down there, I see two people running. I hear guns go off. They were getting shot at. I called the police and the police responded to it, of course. I didn't stop the car because I was easier to hit if I did that. But we have some problems here in Waynesboro with the criminal element, drugs, stuff like that. So we really need to fund our police force. We need to make sure these guys get what they need. Thank
Aaron War.
Hello. My name is Aaron War. I live in Stewart's Draft. I coach the mountain bike team, Stan Augusta, Waynesboro, composite mountain bike team. Like Mark Russell, I would love to have some Waynesboro students on our team. I'm in huge support of this park. There's already been grants given for the plans. The plans are 90% done with basically free money, so why not use it?
Hey, 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 hey.
Okay. We got grant money to get the, get the plans done that didn't cost the city of Waynesboro anything. I digress. It's a great idea. The revenue that it would bring in, I was at a race last weekend, this past weekend in Stokesville. There were over 550 kids that are racing from all over the state of Virginia. Each one of those kids has a parent, two parents, siblings. They were all there visiting the area, spending their money. They could do the same thing for the city of Waynesboro. So I'm in huge support of this. The tax benefits are huge. We could fund the police, give them even more money. That's what everybody wants. So I think the big picture, it would be a big help.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chanda McGuffin.
Good evening. Chanda McGuffin, I live here in Waynesboro. I thank all of those who came before me and acknowledge Rise. I appreciate that. Because one element we don't have, and I haven't heard consistently, is the concern about the children that are homeless in the city of Waynesboro. Dr. Castle came and gave his report at the last meeting, and he noted there were 70 children that they knew of. Okay? Now, we can build a park and all this other stuff, but when you have a child who doesn't have a place to stay, doesn't know when their next meal is coming, their parents can't make enough to take care of their families, we have a homeless problem. And I've been talking about this for at least four years, at least. And for some reason, we keep missing the mark. Let me give some history. Mr. Short, when you ran the first time, you had this vision of that park. And you shared with us that that was going to be part of the neighborhood revitalization that you could see happening on the east side of town, right? And we were excited about it, me included. But it has morphed into a multimillion dollar project for a club of bikers. All while we have a homeless problem in the city of Waynesboro. We are not being transparent with the people. Yes, the grant could be used for a park. Recreational activities, outside, got it. But it also was changed by the federal government to include for you to be equitable in your disbursement of low income, black and brown families, because they found out it was not being distributed across all of the community. And that's why it was changed. I don't know how you sleep at night. I guess because it's not your children or it's not your grandchildren. But Rise is contacted almost every day of people being evicted and no place to go. I was told yesterday that teenagers getting ready to graduate from Waynesboro High School will be living in a car when they graduate. I'm trying to find housing for two families right now. And you think $2.5 million should go into a park? I don't care where it came from. It was for COVID money to bring the families and citizens back in our community. It's not for you to mismanage to use for a park.
Bart Lehman.
Good evening. I'm Bart Landman, 900 Oak Avenue. That is where I live. Or I should say 1010 East Main Street because that's really where I live. That's Basic City Beer Company. I represent east side business. People said to me, "Bart, you're crazy. East side? You're going to put a brewery on the east side? That doesn't make any sense." I think they wanted me to get checked out. And just yesterday, or this past week, we had over, probably about 3,000 people that came to the brewery on the east side. A thousand people for an outdoor event. Anyway, maybe I'm a dreamer, you know? When people were saying, "You're going to lose all your money because you are putting it in a crazy spot" that everybody wanted me to do it sort of on, you know, downtown proper or up on the mountain even, you know? But just to say that I'm supporting this because I think that what people can see, what has happened with Basic City is that we have brought a lot of people into town from Richmond, Northern Virginia, Norfolk, just traveling, day stop, you know, spending a lot of money, eating in town. And beer drinkers are hikers, bikers, and fishermen. So these are my clientele. And to have a spot right across the street, you know, we joke about maybe putting a zip line. I think that maybe the, I think maybe the snow removal, you know, if we could have people coming down the hill, you know, on a sled and hanging out at Basic City, that'd be awesome, too. So you can see, I'm silly, but I'm also very serious. I think the east side has momentum going with Hoover and Associates coming in and buying the Colony Hotel and Ed's Grill to have operating businesses. I think they see the vision over there. You know, Rockfish Gap Outfitters has been there for a lot of years. They're very supportive of this. They get a lot out of this because they do bike stuff and hiking and biking. Kombucha has come into town, you know, over the last, they've probably been here four or five years. They're the greatest. They're all outdoorsy. Kombucha drinkers are all outdoorsy. We've got a gold mine that is the east side, that 6 million people cruise across, you know, Skyline Parkway and, or Skyline Drive and the Blue Ridge Parkway. And we should have more of those people coming down to Waynesboro on the, you know, coming down through the east side and spending their tourism dollars in Waynesboro. So I'm 100% in support of this and I thank you for letting me have a conversation with you tonight.
Thank you, sir. Jeff Fife.
Mayor Henderson, esteemed members of council, thank you for the opportunity for our community to share their thoughts about Waynesboro. And the commitment and the passion of this room is inspiring for all of us. So is opening the windows and the breeze. Thank you for doing that as well. Been here 52 years, born in Summit Square, probably die in Summit Square. And 30 years ago, I lived on Fifth Street. I live on Chatham Road now. And I remember going on Fifth Street and walking into the Nenland Field, again thankful for another breeze, and sitting over the top of our fair city and dreaming of what I call the Basic City Restoration Project. So I love that I'm following Bart and hearing about his vision for Basic City. And I'm excited about some of the things that are happening on the east side of town, with the museum coming in, with the success of the Greenway and some of those activities. Now, I'm not fully aware of the total amount of Recovery Act funds available to us, somewhere in the $7 to $9 million category. So we're talking about two and a half here with Sunset Park. And since this is the Sunset speaking part, I'll speak to Sunset Park. But if I could throw my hat in the ring for some police funding, please. But let me speak to Sunset Park and specifically speak to sedentary children become sedentary adults. The most recent community health needs assessment done by our local hospital had 81% of our citizens deemed as overweight. 81%. State average is 66%. We're higher than Stanton residents. We're higher than Augusta County residents. Anything that gets kids moving, I'm in favor for, and I'd like to see its support. It's secondary, I look at the investment that this can have in Waynesboro, in the east side, and bringing more economy and tourism dollars into our region. When I heard Bobby mention at the very beginning, and he talked about the 160,000, when he was praising Dwayne Jones, 160,000 people went through Crowe's Tunnel. And how many went through the Greenway? 65,000 users. What connects sort of those two areas? Is there another 100,000 that we could drive into Waynesboro that were at the Crowe's Tunnel but didn't get on the Greenway? Bart just said $6 million travelers on the Skyline Drive. And I looked up as I was sitting here on Google that said 14 million users on the Blue Ridge Parkway. Something unique like this, driving people in and spending money in our businesses, in our shops. I also looked at the site selection survey that Greg Hitchens presented, I'm not sure which council meeting, where those are the folks that choose what communities that they come into to invest their dollars, to bring new business into a community. And it had a ranking. And they've been following this survey for 15 years. And the most recent number that they had, number one, won't surprise anybody, the availability of skilled labor. That's the number one thing that businesses are looking for. Number two, highway accessibility. Number three, energy availability and the costs. And number four, the quality of life. Quality of life actually raised in the past three years of what businesses were looking for, the site selectors that choose where they put their dollars and where they invest their citizens, quality of life. I look at Sunset Park as an increase in Waynesboro's quality of life. I look at something that can draw down more money so we can fund more of these critical things that I'm hearing from our community and thrilled to hear the volume that we're getting. And I think this is a good investment that can help us continue to make more funds to cover those things. And if there's other ARPA money in there, fund the police. Thank you, guys.
Sharon Van Neem.
My name is Sharon Van Neem. I live at 2116 Bellevue. There's an old saying that says the best time to plant a tree is 20 years ago. The second best time is today. If that's true for a single tree, then it's certainly true for a park. There've been a lot of very eloquent people talking about things that we need in Waynesboro. And I don't disagree. We do. The problem is, one-time funding will not solve ongoing costs for police and infrastructure and all of the other things that are going to be needs for the future in an ongoing way. One-time money doesn't do that. What it can do is invest in our future. It can create a park that will, I believe, generate economic growth for us, but more importantly, will give us that quality of life that Jeff was talking about. I'm not a mountain biker, never been on one in my life, but I am a walker and I'm a hiker. I can walk in the neighborhoods, yes, but there is something different about walking in woods. There is a deep spiritual connection there. There's a health benefits, but there's an emotional and spiritual connection that you can only get in a wooded area that's different than the rest of our parks. They have a place for recreation and play fields and that kind of thing, but there's also a place for wilder areas. And I believe that we should be investing in those. I know that I've spent many, many wonderful hours in the woods, walking trails that were built with someone else's vision. They didn't just happen. They didn't just appear. Someone decided that it was worth putting the money into putting that land aside and creating the opportunity for people to connect with nature. And I believe it's Waynesboro's position right now to do that for the next generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Danny Ledford.
Good evening. Danny Ledford, 545 South Wayne Avenue, otherwise known as the unofficial Waynesboro Drag Strip. One of the things Lynn said earlier about nobody fished it 25 years ago when I did, and if you can catch fish, you can catch it when it's dirty or it's clean water. But the river certainly improved over time. And I've worked with Duane when I was president of the youth baseball. I put myself in a tough situation here. I'm a cyclist. I'm an outdoors person. But I have some concerns about the park. I know we've talked about it and going last or going near the end is always tough because most people have hit all the key points. But people talk about the police. I've watched two people get hit on Wayne Avenue. Two, a kid and an adult. The lady fractured her pelvis, darn near killed her. The kid's lucky because it ran over his chest. Our police force are overwhelmed. They're not paid what they should be paid. This premium increase could be used with this money to make sure that we're not just training people to go to Augusta County because Augusta County really appreciates Waynesboro. They do. We train all their police officers and then they leave. And then we get to train again and train again. When I worked for UVA, and somebody else brought this up, when I worked for UVA, they came to me in late October and they said, "Hey Danny, you've not spent enough money." I said, "What do you mean, I've not spent enough money?" Well, see, we have a budget and if you don't spend it next year, it gets taken away. It's called irresponsible spending. If we truly don't need all this money, we're just taking it from the government, which is borrowing it from China or wherever we borrow our money from today, and it just continues to increase on the debt. So I'm not saying I don't want the park. I would love to have the park, but my concerns are continuing expenditures with it. How many people are going to take to maintain it? Because right now, when I worked with Duane, he struggled every single day on his budget to get things mowed, the fields done. And he can tell you with the youth baseball, we gave money to them all the time to help put new topsoil on. We tried to help the city. So what I'm asking is, if we can't maintain our current parks, I mean, Basic City Park, we were promised a baseball complex there years ago. Then it became soccer fields. What is it today? It's the same thing, folks. So if you can't promise us that that park is going to be spectacular and maintained, you're going to have to pump water up there. What's the methane gas levels up there? Does anyone know? Is it safe? Can we run around on the grass without being poisoned? I don't know, right? So what I'm asking is, before you vote, whether it's yes or no, or you table it tonight, all I'm asking is that you answer these questions. How are we going to pay for it in the future? Because it's great that the top line's done, but that's not the end of the cost. We know it. We know it. We see Basic City, Ridgeview and all these other parks. I'm asking for you guys to table it. We have to 2024 to spend this money. So let's be smart. Let's make Waynesboro a smart place and not just spend money because we can spend it. Thank you.
Terry Ward on Kent Road. Thank you for seeing all these people and thank you for coming out and talking, whether we agree or not, because it takes social courage to get up here and talk. And, you know, you're putting in your late hours here. Oh, where to begin? Golly. I mean, a lot of things have been said. I came in here, I had like a 90-second spiel, but so many people have said so many things. I remember back when Harrisonburg, this is like 30 years ago, they had a chance to put some municipal money into a theater company. It's kind of weird that they were getting that request, but they got this request. It was this outfit called Shenandoah Shakespeare Express. They began at JMU, then they kind of moved out on their own. And public money for theater? We've got cracks in the sidewalk. We need more police. The usual reasons. Shenandoah Shakespeare Express did get some funding from Stanton. They moved there. They changed their name. They're called the American Shakespeare Company now. And you might have heard of Blackfriars Theater. A lot of money, a lot of Shakespeare money goes into Stanton now because they had that investment thought of, let's put a little bit here and create an attraction that'll bring people here. I think Harrisonburg regrets having lost that investment opportunity. I've been hearing a lot of people here talking as if it needs to be all or nothing, like it will only be park or it will be police and poor kids and potholes. Does it have to be all or nothing thinking? This is a rhetorical question. Let's ponder this. Maybe it can be 70% park, 30% some of these other worthy causes, many of which also do have other sources of funding. I mentioned Harrisonburg. I used to live near there. Moved here about five years ago. And we hear about how, well, if we do some enhancements, people will come to the area. There's this imaginary tourism money from these invisible future people. I'm one of those people. I probably spend hundreds every quarter on dining, on theater, way too much down at Bart's. I'm one of these people. Waynesboro is cool now. I come here, I spend, and I move here. What made me move here? Constitution Park. That's a recent thing that got here because of some enlightened thinking about let's improve this area. The River Walk and the much older Ridgeview Park. Those were the three things that sold our family on moving here. We don't work here. We work on the other side of the mountain. Waynesboro was more cool than Nelson County or Almaro County or Charlottesville, in part because of these nice things, which yes, did take some tax money. It is a matter of investing and thinking ahead. Now towns spend an awful lot to try to bring in tourists. They will put brickwork stencils on crosswalks. And I've never gone to a town because by golly, I want to see that brickwork stencil in their crosswalk. I want to go to that town. Flower baskets on mock Victorian lamp posts and lots of tourism advertising. And these are nice, but no one goes there specifically because of that. We go there for good things. With 6 million people traveling Skyline Drive, you want to bring a few more of them here, make an anchor landmark thing like this Skyline Park. I'm running out of time. And it is not just an elite thing for the few. Anybody could walk such trails. It is not, it's not a country club. It's a public park. We need some stuff like that. East of 340, by the way, speaking of underrepresented populations, I could go on for many, many more minutes.
Thank you, sir.
I apologize, it's late, but I'm gonna say what I gotta say. My name's Andrea Jackson. I actually do live in Ward A, quite near where the interest of this would be about two blocks. I actually am very much for the park and I love all the ideas. My issue, like everyone else, to a certain degree, actually, I don't agree with either side. I have my own independent, I'm gonna offend everybody, so here we go. I love the idea, I think it's great. I think it's inappropriate to use American Rescue funds for this project. And I'm equal opportunity. In 2020, y'all tried to purchase police vehicles with the COVID money and we all called it and said this is inappropriate. And then y'all ended up spending the money and giving, I think, the employees bonuses or whatever, which is a cool idea. And I'm equally against this just because it says American Rescue. Like, we don't need to be rescued from a park. Like, everyone says we got parks. Like, I love the Greenway, I love all of that. I love, I think people need to get out there and like conquer obesity. I do however, think probably poverty has way more to do with obesity than like riding a bike. And I just think that a lot of the statements that are said are just being unrealistic and not like getting to the point of really what's going on in the city. Like, this funds, like, I don't know about y'all, but I lost my job in April or March 2020. I was laid off. A lot of people were laid off. A lot of people's lives were changed. And you know what I mean? Like, this is what this money is for, to help these people. A lot of businesses that we knew are not here anymore. This could be like a starter for like businesses or people who want to invest in it. And you know what? Like, if you want to invest in Ward A, there's way more than a park. What about Basic City? There are dilapidated buildings. I ride, you know, through commerce and it's just like, what the hell? You know what I'm saying? I really like, years ago, whoever brought that up about the renovation and doing all of this and knowing about the history of Basic City, and basically y'all was just been like, well, nobody's gonna come down there, so we're just gonna like overlook it and try to make it into some type of industrial area. You've just basically written it off. And then this is just me just going off in general. I've been here, born and raised, I've lived on the east side. There's nothing wrong with the east side and there's nothing wrong with Ward A. You know what I'm saying? And I'm tired of, you know what I mean, just this whole city in general talking crap or talking down to us. Like, you know what I'm saying? There's something wrong with that area. No, we need investment, just like any other area, and we don't need like a park. We need stuff that's actually gonna help the citizens in that area. And I just feel like, I just had several conversations with y'all about y'all's city plan and things of the nature of like improving renters and this and that. And the first thing y'all said is we don't have the money. We don't have the money. Anytime, I love, and I thank y'all for meeting with us, but that is everything y'all said. I've actually paid attention. I've come to this stuff. Y'all are robbing Peter to pay Paul to get y'all's balanced budget. So I don't know, there's so much more that can be done with this money. Thank you.
Brittany, and I'm gonna do a terrible job with his last name, Paduchny. Is that close enough?
My name is Brittany Paduchny. I live on Highland Avenue. My husband and I moved here, both as healthcare professionals, turning down jobs in other counties, mostly because of what this area has for us. We, when we purchased our first home, we made sure that we were in walking distance to the Greenway. We use it almost every weekend to walk down, eat meals. I'm not a biker. I don't need help falling typically, but a group of friends and I did drive down to Damascus, spend a whole weekend, rent bikes, spend a bunch of money at breweries and eating places because it was something to do. I think that this park would be a wonderful asset to the community. It would bring tourism. I've done it myself. And so I think this would be a very good use of funds.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Jeremy Sloot. I live on Dogwood Circle here in Waynesboro, Virginia. I initially did not plan on speaking coming here this evening. However, listening to everybody speak, I see both sides have legitimate points and very strong beliefs. My concern is more in the process, majoritively being that the city council has percentages of budget that are allotted when you do your standard budget for schools, for public safety, right? You don't always take 100% of what's allotted for, you know, security or, you know, to the police force, you have the sheriff's department, you have the courthouse, you have to break it up. I don't feel like it was straightforward, brought out, that this money could be split up into other things to be mutually beneficial, all in the same direction. For example, you know, my children frequent every single park in Waynesboro, so I'm definitely supportive of the park system. However, if you've taken your children to Ridgeview Park lately, you'll notice that they're climbing upside-down slide because it has been worn through, so they had to flip it rather than take it off and board up the playset. At the Ridgeview Park, that's one of our best parks, in my opinion. I love the river, I love the bridge. It has a running through the woods, everything that my children love. I just believe that it was misrepresented that the funds could not be used or split up. You know, using 100% of anything that's been allotted to us, for one thing, is a very strong decision to make without necessarily the input in advance like this. You know, we're discussing distributing the whole allotment for the park system, the section, when I do believe that it could be split up. Also, you know, I lost my train of thought, I'm sorry. There are so many points that have been hit on already. I'd like to thank you for your time. You have a good evening.
Hello, my name's David Verde. I live in Stanton. Pardon me, kind of thinks I may.
Say your name one more time.
David Verde, V E R D E, it's green in Spanish, also a popular salsa. I live in Stanton, but I thought I'd come speak. I'm a very active user of your park system here in Waynesboro, so I'm excited for the prospects of this funding to get approved for Sunset Park. To make my comment simple, I would like to say that I'm in support of the fundings getting distributed for the park's plan and development. But I'm gonna expand because y'all deserve the same stuff I give my city council. Without diving into the complete history of my work history, it does take me to countless municipalities, small and large, across the country. I get to work with various tourism agencies and outdoor recreation-centered businesses. I often find myself in small communities that are like Waynesboro, have similar demographics. Often they had industries that came here and shaped the city and have come and gone and in many ways, the reasons why those corporations moved there, like rivers, the city parks and the river are all creating new reasons for people and businesses to seek out and choose the city as a place to call home. I will say, recently I got to visit the site that Sunset Park is planned for. I had permission. I don't know if I needed to be explicit there, but I truly mean this. For some reason, I found myself needing a new place to live or, you know, was moving out of my home. I would very much consider it and be actively looking here because of my visit to that park. The nearly 360-degree views and the valley, the Blue Ridge that you can see all there, it was honestly a delight. And to have that within walking distance from my home or biking distance would be amazing. But in my opinion, this park will become a gem and a destination to people who live within 30 miles of Waynesboro, nearly year-round. You may not see it yet, but I promise you, I've seen other parks that have been freshly minted and people will come. It'll become a true gathering place for the community. And also, like, it's a pretty cool name and you can do some astronomy stuff up there. So it's not just bikes. I heard a lot about bikes. I'm pretty pro-bike too, but there's a lot of things at this park. The master plan is really comprehensive. Anyways, forgive me for not giving more like concrete data, but I'll finish with two final comments. First, the location of the park is a true asset to the neighborhood and the community that lives on that east side of 340. Just assuming that most of you get around via car, crossing those four lanes of Delphine Road, that's a huge deterrent for people to want to go visit the other parks in the city that are all on that side of the road. There may be some that I'm unaware of since I don't live here, but all the ones I visit are on that side of the road. And, you know, as a young person or teenager or something, I personally wouldn't be super stoked to dodge cars, to go to a park and enjoy myself, or take my family with a stroller across those streets if I had a park on my side of town, in my community. So there's a possibility of increase in property value and there's also possibility of interest in development and new businesses that might find a customer base that cater to the park. Local fly fishing shop is a great example of how they have built a clientele that caters to people who come here to visit those parks. Clearly have a lot less time than I do in Stanton, so I'll finish on this. Mill Mountain is a really great example. Roanoke, it's a multipurpose park that sits on top of the hill. It does not have 360 views, but there's trails, there's bikes, people ride the road up there on their bicycles, and there's awesome views. It's a gathering place. And Tannery Knob, which is a new park in Johnson City, Tennessee, look it up, it's very similar to this park, so, and I know the people if you want to talk to them. But anyways, thank you so much for your time.
You were the first one to do that tonight. I have to. Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for being patient enough to listen to all of us. And I hope you'll do the right thing. I'm amazed that nobody has mentioned the word taxes, I don't think, in all of this stuff tonight. In listening and watching, there have been basically three groups of people that have come through, and maybe I represent the third category. Those of us who will probably not use the park for any particular period of time, I think it's a great idea, would be a great asset. There's another two categories, which I'll just call them the average people, the people who are working and have an income, and the younger people that may be disadvantaged and need help. You've been elected as the group to help each of the three categories to the best you can. If you look at our national government and the mess that this country is in, is there gonna be a future for Waynesboro? Is the economy gonna collapse? I don't know. I hope not. I've still got a few more years I want to invest. So, everybody here has a like-to-do and some here have a need-to-do. And it's your tough decision. a like-to-do, and some here have a need-to-do. And it's your tough decision to know how you're gonna satisfy those wants. The younger category wants the park, middle-aged category wants the park, and the senior category not so much. So, you need to do the right thing. Don't do what you want to do, do what you should do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sharon Fitz.
My name is Sharon Fitz, and I am a resident of Waynesboro. Yeah, everyone is touched on a lot tonight, and I've looked around the room, and this is the community, but this is not really representative of the entire community. I looked at the demographics, and the demographics show that 5,000 of your residents are both black and Latino. And, you know, most of us don't ride bikes, or hike, or canoe. That's just not a cultural thing. I'm not saying that that's true for every black or Latino person, but that's just not. If I was to ask some of these biking groups, I guarantee you that we are a minority in those groups as well. But what I do know is, is that there's no recreation center here. And when I say, I'm not talking about the Y, I'm not talking about the Boys and Girls Club, those are great, but you have Rosenwall Community Center, and there is a lot of kids that would utilize that, that building, but the gym is problematic. And I don't even know if it's open right now. I don't know. But there's, there, and, and also, I want to make clear is that RISE doesn't just serve poor children, or at-risk children. We serve children. And it's important to realize that what we want to do is give them creative opportunities to be cultivated. So, where the, the park is a beautiful thing, and biking, and hiking, and canoeing, don't knock it, I don't do it, but I can see how we need to start thinking about the children of this community, and the everyday people of this community. I heard a lot of talk about tourists, that's beautiful, I'm sure, I know they bring in money, and I know downtown is like, really, you know, kept up by tourists and the people with the money, but it's the everyday people that pay the taxes here. It's the everyday people that utilize all of the businesses that's not downtown. And it's the everyday people that need help with their homes, with their sidewalks, with whatever. And this money is meant to help the people of your community, not just the people that's in here tonight. And I, and I mean no disrespect, but you have a large community, 22,000 people, and you have to think about the needs of the people. And I can tell you, in my four years of being in this area, there's been a lot of talk about sidewalks that need to be not repaired, replaced, fixed, where elderly people who have owned their homes for over 50 years have lived here and have to come out of their house and, and actually take a chance of falling and breaking their hip to get to their car. I mean, these things seem to be, you know, everyone joked and laughed, and all of this, this is not a laugh and matter. Your children are, oh, and I want to say, black people, they do spend money, they just don't spend it here. So, if, if you want tourist money, I mean, we actually have money, we just don't have anywhere we want to go to spend it. You know what I mean? I mean, there's River Fest and there's musical things going on, but I like reggae and blues and jazz too, but the combination just doesn't really offer anything for people like me. So, I think that matters. I want to make sure I say that, you know, there's a representative, there's, there's people here that will spend their money here, that spend their money here, that need you all to consider that there is needs, not because they're poor, not because they get federal assistance, but because they are community people, they are residents, they pay taxes here, and they have a right to be considered.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chris Leavell.
How's everybody this evening?
Good.
Sorry, I'm not a public speaker by no means. I live in Ward A.
Can you give me your name again?
Christopher Lovell.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. I've looked at the census as well. 2020 census show that we have 22,000 people now. Since the 90s, that's increased by 3,700 people. If you look at it per shift for the officers on site, or on the, in the town, that's five officers for 4,500 citizens. So, per, that's 4,500 officers per citizen of the town. 2010 census showed 97 housing units in the city. 2020, they didn't have anything out, but I used the increase of 5.7% from 2020 census, so that's roughly 10,000 housing units. Mr. Henderson, you're a firefighter as well. You look at, you're tightening these houses in so tight, when one goes, you're gonna have exposures to the other one. You only got one station in the city. It's on this side. You've got all the new houses at Kate Collins, the townhomes, you've got the houses by Martins, you've got the new Windy Grove attachment back that way. It's gonna take 10, 15 minutes to get from one side of the city to the other. By that time, you've got multiples, and then you're putting the risk of everybody else on the line by driving through the city just to get to the other side of the city. So, that's a problem that I don't think a lot of people are thinking about. Same way with the police department. You put the park on the hill, okay, you've got five officers in the whole city. If you got someone, two on the other side of the city, how they're gonna get to the other side? Okay, I understand that we'll have it locked tonight. Okay, we also have signs at, "Don't pay, give money to panhandlers." They're still there. At night, you're still gonna have drug problems up there, even though you have a gate or cameras. So, if you don't fund your police to protect the park, the park is still gonna have problems at night. If you think about it also, yes, it could bring tourism in, that's no problem. But if you have these places, bike ramps, bike parks, down in the woods, how many times does it gotta take for people to get mugged by homeless before it's like, you know what? We're not going there no more. So then you just completely threw all the money away that you were gonna use. So, you know, I know I live in Ward A, quarter mile from Lena's house, there's a path that goes right behind Augusta Lumber. There's a path back there you can ride your bike. No one's gonna go back there, because there's a bunch of homeless that camp back there. You have all those bike paths in the woods, they're gonna camp back there. They're gonna, they could possibly mug, rape, murder anybody up there. What are you gonna do about, hey, we got a fence, we got a camera, that stuff's not gonna happen. Oh, but we only got five officers, so, sorry about your luck. Another thing is, if you think about housing, if we could maybe increase housing up there, if it's possible to where you can actually build homes on it, which I don't know if that's possible, I know that's way over my head, but if you can bring homes into that area, it would also increase home values of other properties, it would also bring people in, which would, could lower the tax rate because you have more people to spread the taxes around, which means you wouldn't have to increase taxes. You have the Amazon warehouse in Fisherfield opening up soon. That's three 500 jobs right there. That's homes that you could bring in that area, that would also increase tax revenue, that could also increase businesses. If you bought houses up there, Basic City Brewery, that could also get benefits, local businesses as well. My thing is, if you could increase that type of revenue in the city versus throwing it all into a park, I think you'd be more beneficial, and you also put the public safety in mind as well, which is number one key, because I know, if my house is burning down, and I live on the other side of town, 15 minutes is a good long while. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jim Wood.
Jim Wood, Ward D, here in Waynesboro. One thing I have sat back and watched is the body English, and I know you are glad that I think I'm the last one, right? So, we've talked about the park thing for, for quite a while now. And I've listened to what everybody said, there's been good points on, on, on all sides. And quite honestly, when you look in this crowd in here, you see people who vote different ways. But when it comes down to our community, we all care about our community. So this has kind of bridged that gap between any kind of political party in how we feel about this park. One thing that bothers me the most is, the majority of people that I've seen that have come in here to support this park don't live in Waynesboro.
Right.
All right? From Glen Allen, to Stewart's Drive, to Stanton, to wherever, they don't live here, and they don't have, they can come here and play in a park and have a good time, and then they have to deal with the crumbling infrastructure. We have an infrastructure problem in this city that we need. Somebody was talking about sitting up on the hill and having such a great view. Well, sure, you can look out over the city, and you can probably smell the Leggett Building from there. You know, you can look out over the city and hear the sirens going by nightly multiple times, because we don't have enough police force in this town to, to cover the job. Now, those of you who know me, know the business I work in. I'm, I'm in the gun business, and I work in Stanton. And I get people that come in my store all the time who carry a gun, who honor their Second Amendment, carry their gun daily, just like they carry their wallet or their cellphone. And when they say, "Where do you, where you live at?" I'd say, "Waynesboro," they're like, "Ooh, I'm not going over there. Crime's too bad over there. Drug's too bad over there." There's more important things we can spend this money on. Now, I don't know that if some of y'all have already decided how you're gonna vote on this, I kind of believe that we do, that you have, because I was told a couple of weeks ago, that only thing we can spend this money on is this. And then a couple of days later, I find an, an email in my inbox from the Treasury Department that lays out the guidelines on what you can spend this money on. And there's a variety of things that we can spend this money on. You know, I agree with what Danny Lefford said, we've got great parks. Dwayne has done an awesome job as head of our Parks and Rec in this city. I've worked with Dwayne on several occasions. I used to run the Little League Football and Cheerleading Program in this town. I'm now on the Board of Directors for the entire valley when it comes to some Little League sports, as far as football and cheer goes. And they were always so nice to help us with Basic Park. But what's in Basic Park right now besides a boat ramp into the, into the river? There's a big wide open field, there's a shelter there, there's also a porta john. There's also a baseball field that is, could, could use a lot of repair. One of the biggest things that, the biggest sports for youth, and we've talked about the obesity problem, not getting, you know, kids not getting out of the house, one of the biggest sports for kids is baseball in this town. There's rec league, there's travel ball, there's baseball everywhere, and it goes year round. If that field was upgraded to the point to where they could use that field as a regulation field to play baseball in, that's gonna help that problem. That's gonna help that issue. You know, I'm sure that, that Jeff down at, at the Y could do, you'd do a whole lot of good with some of that money. I'm sure that Dwayne could actually, you know, there's, there's things about Basic Park. They're talking about running plumbing up to Sunset Park, but why not plumbing it at Basic Park? That's already in use. You know, you look around, you look around in here, and I love the fact that everybody's getting together on this stuff. I love the fact that everybody has their own opinion, they're willing to come out here. But I hope that you take that and you honor that, and listen to what the people say. All right? Now, usually, when I come into a city council meeting, I sit right back there in the back, and, you know, you could throw a rock in here and not hit another person, because it's always pretty light at city council meetings. So tonight, I hope you see how important this is. Because tonight, my seat's been over here, and I'm kind of glad it was, because I see him keeping tick marks, positives and negatives of what people have to say about it. Erase the neg, erase the, the positives of the people who don't live in Waynesboro, and spend the money for Waynesboro on people in Waynesboro.
Thank you.
That's all we have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I close the public hearing. And these ordinance have been introduced and discussed at a previous meeting, so this evening, we can take a vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
We're gonna have discussion.
Do you have discussion, ma'am?
That was at the last meeting. Oh, we can have it if you want. Okay.
Go ahead.
Questions?
Yeah.
Okay, I just have a few questions for staff, and you may, or may not be able to answer these for me tonight. Do we have any idea how much revenue that this park could create or generate for the city?
I don't have that, no, ma'am.
Okay, and do we have an idea of how much the annual upkeep will be?
Dwayne, could you speak to that? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Sorry.
So, it's difficult to put an actual dollar amount, but we would treat this much like our other parks, so the restroom would be serviced daily. We would cut the grass, and again, we've talked about the meadow versus lawn, and how we would do that. The parking lot itself, again, we're not talking about snow removal. Everything needs maintenance, we certainly are aware of that. Just to address the water line, I know that's been brought up, there is a water tank there, we have the ability to put water, we have the ability to put power, we've looked at that in the infrastructure as, as a potential, you know, a way to reduce those costs. I will speak just a little bit to revenue, so we do have a revenue stream, whether it be festivals, events, and shelter rentals, much like Ridgeview. All of our park shelters are virtually rented all weekend. That's not a huge amount of money, but it is a, it is an offsetting revenue stream that comes, and we do think that Sunset could be popular based on its views.
Thank you. Just another quick question. We have until, is the year 2024 to commit the funds, and then 2026 to spend them? If we did not vote on the park tonight, we would not lose this funding, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And there are other uses that we could potentially use this funding for, which would be sidewalks, roads, rental assistance, utilities assistance for those who probably suffered some cutoffs during the COVID shutdowns. Is that also correct?
Definitely for the infrastructure you meant, you mentioned. I'm not sure about the, the last two.
Okay. Thank you. I do think, I agree with many of the people that spoke tonight. I, I think the park would be a beautiful addition to Waynesboro. That said, this particular funding, I don't feel is the proper use at this time to support Sunset Park, for this funding. Now, if we could find other funding sources, then I would definitely support that, but not ARPA funding for a park.
I appreciate Mr. Allen's comments about the police situation. Again, I think most folks recognize that is not something that will be fixed overnight, whether there is an additional funding stream or not. That is a long-term issue, and I think we have taken steps to try to, to alter the, the trajectory there. I, I think we've corrected some of the misconceptions, you know, the water, yes, there's a big water tank there, so we're not gonna be pumping water up or driving it up the hill. The, the question about the American Rescue Plan Act funds, some people have referred to them as COVID funds, that's, that's really not the same word. You know, this was designed both to work through the pandemic, but then also to help communities recover from the pandemic. And so, infrastructure expenditures are part of that plan. And so, that's how, you know,
All right, I call the council meeting back to order and we're at item number nine. Item number nine is to receive a report from the city financial, let me read this. It's to receive the city of Waynesboro Financial Compliance Report and Sumories for Physical Year 2021. Mr. McCormick, this is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As part of the city's annual audit, governmental auditing standards require independent auditors issue three separate reports, or three distinct reports. The first report, which opines on the correctness of the city's financial statements, was presented at the first meeting in December of 2021. Neither of these two reports affect that. It's still the same report that the financial statements can be relied upon and are materially correct. The two reports presented here opine that the auditors did not, or did the required testing of internal controls, and the city complied in all material respect with compliance requirements of its major federal programs. The major federal programs tested were the Coronavirus Relief Fund, which we commonly refer to as the CARES Fund, adult education, basic grants to state, which is a grant that the schools receive, and the COVID-19 Education Stabilization Fund, which is another grant that the schools received as part of the CARES Act last year. No action is required by council on this item, and it's for informational purposes only. It should be hyperlinked in your briefing, and then there is also a copy of it on the city's website for review. If council has any questions on the attached reports, I'd be happy to answer them now.
Any questions? This one doesn't require any action on our part. It's informational only. I hear no questions, Mr. McCormick. We're going to move on to item number 10. Item number 10 is to receive a summary presentation of the city manager's recommended budget. This item is provided as, provided introductory remarks for agenda items 11, 12, and 13. So, Mr. McCormick, you're back up.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. This presentation will serve to summarize the FYE 2023 City Manager's Recommended Budget, and also as an opportunity for ask, for council to ask any further questions about the budget or any of the ordinances presented in items 11 through 13. Okay, so, um, this is for, again, just for informational purposes, to give some context to the ordinances in the public hearings that will follow this item, to catch everybody up, the real estate tax has no change, no recommended change. It's recommended to stay at 90 cents and was advertised as such. Personal property, business, no change, $3.25. It was estimated, used in the same methods that we've always used for business personal property. Machinery and tools, machinery and tools, same thing, estimated as we've always estimated it, no change, $3.25. Based on the discussions of the two, two or three budget work sessions that staff and council had, there is a recommended 50 cent decrease in the motor vehicles tax from $3.25 to $2.75. That was arrived at using what we interpreted from council, the desire to go back over 10 years or so and look at the average increases and try to capture that average increase, which was about 6 percent, and then to forego the rest, for lack of a better word. We used a pretty conservative base on that from the commissioner, as many of you are aware. The filing forms are due May 1st, so she's not completed work on what, what is actually in the city at this point. So, as she works through those filing forms, we'll continue to stay in contact with her until we get a final estimated tax base, and if necessary, we can revisit the motor vehicle tax at a later date. But for now, that seems to equalize to about 6 percent increase in the, or in the motor vehicles portion of the personal property tax. These were the basic expenditure change, changes. This slide just represents the, just represents the general fund. Most of the increase went to compensation and benefits. The budget includes a 3 percent raise for all employees, and then the first phase of the compensation study, the plan would be to stack those so that you get the benefit of the compensation study increase first, and then the 3 percent merit would tack on beyond that for anyone that's caught in the first phase of the compensation study. Again, just a reminder on the compensation study, the first phase is to get the new salary scales in, and that is anchored at $13 per hour. Next item, increase in health insurance, $274,000. That's a buffer of about 10 percent, and the hope on that would be that that buffer covers any increase that the city, that the city would get back from the Salk Consortium, which we are in. We won't find out what the increase is until about probably August of this year, and the hope is that 10 percent would cover any increase and that it would, that it would cover any increase and that we wouldn't need to pass anything along to employees. VRS rate increase, every two years, we get a new rate from the actuarial study that VRS does. That rate increase was up, I think, two or three basis points, so it costed close to $200,000. And then the additional holiday appropriation by council, the additional three holidays was about $145,000. School increases derived straight from the funding formula that we have with the schools, 42.5 percent of discretionary revenue, based on the previous year's audit. Additional street maintenance funding, that's mostly offset by revenue that you'll see on the next page, where we push all of the paving funds into the street maintenance program. Increased contribution into WEFAC, if you actually look at the WEFAC line, that is in the city manager's contingency account, that $70,000, just to make sure that we've got the revenue throughout the year, and that would be dispersed as we got into the year. Base revenue changes, most of the increases come from the sales and meals tax increase, not increase, sales and meals tax, revenue is trending upward. These are not based on any rate changes. The only outstanding item with this is the governor's yet to finalize what they are going to do with the grocery tax piece. Personal property tax, that's based on the previous year estimates. Real estate tax, that is home from, or that comes from, partially from growth and partially from a little bit better collection pattern in the previous year, and then there's the increase in street maintenance, that's derived from the, from Virginia Department of Transportation. I believe it's based on allocation per lane mile. Is that correct, Mr. Wood?
It's correct.
Enterprise fund rates. So, when we did the rate studies in, I believe, 2016, the compensation study had not been completed yet. So, what you see there in the stormwater utility fee and the water rate increase is mostly going to go towards funding the compensation study in those funds. There's no proposed increase in the sewer rate, and the $1.50 per month proposed increase in the refuse collection is wholly set aside to fund Phase Five at the landfill and so a few other small construction projects at the landfill, but it's mostly for the Base Five. A couple of notes, in the enterprise fund ordinance, there is a method being put in for how we determine the rate for outside customers. It's always been 10 percent greater than what, for customers outside of the city limits. It's always been 10 percent, but it's generally not been codified, so we put that in. And then on the sewer rates, there is a note in there on how we estimate a consumer's bill if the meter does not read that was incorrectly taken out the last time we did a large change in the sewer So, next steps, tonight, we have three public hearings. First will be the tax rate, second will be the utility ordinance, and then third will be the appropriation ordinance on the budget. Those can be introduced, seconded, and discussed this evening. All of those have public hearings with them. May 9th, we have the budget and ordinance adoption, and then into May, June, we have a CIP budget amendment that will be just to move the funds that were in fund balance left over from the 2021 Annual Financial Report to the CIP Fund, if the council votes to adopt the CIP budget as it is. And then July and August, we have some small capital budget items, the recurring items that will generally go out of the budget, lease cars and some maintenance items for public works and some things like that, that we would come back to you all around July or August. If council has any questions, I would be happy to answer them now.
No questions? Thank you. Thank you, Cameron. All right, item number 11 is to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance imposing taxes for calendar year 2022. I hereby open the public hearing.
Craig Scott.
Mr. Scott.
Got friends everywhere. Good evening, hardworking and probably tired mayor, vice mayor, and councilman. Thank you. We just had, obviously, the Sunset Park just passed. It's going to be a tourist attraction. I think whether, measuring the parameters thereof, what it's going to do, we don't know. A jamboree is fine. It's once a year. Maybe we need to have some improved thinking or out-of-the-box thinking. So, for example, if that's going to be a tourist draw, as has been proposed or posited, then maybe we don't need, for example, the tourist office. That would in turn help pay for maintenance for the park without raising any additional levies or encumbrances thereof. Basic city brewery brought in thousands of tourists or people without a farthing of tax dollars needed. As a matter of fact, it generated tax dollars. So, government, there's a, people want to help each other, and that's why you're on the council. But there's also a horrible thing that we're all guilty of, vanity. And we try to plan, but the optimal venue for this, it's philosophic, obviously, boys and girls, is to allow growth from the bottom up rather than top down. Urban enterprise zones, I talked about how we could repurpose buildings for rise, even if there's no, per se, money thrown in, but if we could give them a tax exemption for two, three years and get volunteers to come in there and repurpose the building, like Habitat Humanity, it's a win-win, without actually tapping into the treasury, because there's no revenue for an abandoned building anyway. So, it's a win-win. So, this is the kind of think, things, my philosophy, that I was trying to talk with Doc about, and we're on the same page and same goal. I think we all are. Improving the quality of life, lowering the crime level, because we want more educated children walking, playing ball, and even in the streets. I know this is not good, Mayor, but you, you get my point. We could do this without tax increases. The Delphine property by exit 91 is a boondoggle. That's another problem. We can get out of that contract. There are ways. Services can be rendered optimally in the private sector. Look, we go to the DMV, it's a disaster. You might buy a car, or if you can afford a used car, you go to a dealer. You don't have to deal with the hassle of appointments. The post office versus Kinko's, whatever. Your shoes are made privately. You wouldn't think about it. Choice for food or whatever. Where, what we need to do is, is again, look for competitive bids for privatizing water collection, cleaning up things that would help the instruct, I mentioned this before, I think the city council should take a look at it. I have no axe to grind. I'm not making a farthing on it, but you could buy your pipes at pennies on the dollar. You can buy your chemicals pennies on the dollar. All the root and branch stuff that's in there that is optimally done in the free market. So, we could apply these services, whether it's for schools, education, school choice, whatever. And we could broaden the base, bring in these, repurpose these buildings or restore them, and you're going to attract even more people in there. Once you see a child glowing mine with cleaner water, like somebody had mentioned, there is a problem. I mentioned some of that stuff, too. That also causes crime problems. It's been found for chromium and lead and other toxins that will actually distort the mind. Doc, maybe you could back me a little bit on that. But anyway, so it's a whole panoply of thinking outside the block, box, that we've been a top-down approach. I urge a bottom-up approach. Thank you. And I have some particular ideas, and I've mentioned a few. So, anyway, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Mr. Mayor, that's all for number 11.
I didn't do the second whack. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Because like, I got here a little bit late, so I didn't go in there. So, anyway, I don't know if this is the right spot, but.
Ms. Jackson.
My mom.
Ms. Jackson.
Yeah.
Pull that off.
Yeah. Okay, hello. This is Andrea Jackson and Ward A., and I just had a comment on the increase on the, like, because everything was good. Y'all didn't increase anything. And then y'all increased the water by 3 percent. I had a personal issue, because as of now, I'm like paying my parents' water bill, and when you paying it, you're like, whoa, you actually know what's going on. So, in September, the bill was like $215, and then like, because it's every two months, it was like November, whatever, like $230. Now, like, I owe, it's like $275. So, now I'm just like, bro, but see, we had a leak, so hopefully that'll get it fixed. But like, it's just progressively getting like more for no reason. Then y'all want to like, and you know, they do the little things, and they come over by your house and do the meter, I don't know, like, to see. But I'm just saying, it's just sort of like, for no reason, it just got more. So, now you're like, oh, 3 percent. Why I say that is that I've just seen in the past in Waynesboro, it's that a lot of times y'all put like late fees or like on the low stuff, you know what I'm saying? Kind of nickel and dime trying to weigh, but y'all won't raise the price, like the rate. Because like, we have one of the lowest, even though people, the tax rate is like a touchy subject here, we do have one of the lowest in Virginia, you know what I'm saying? And so, I just felt like my parents, because I try to also represent them, because they'll say stuff to me, and my mom was like, what? Like, why don't they just use that American Rescue money for the, instead of raising the water? And I was like, I don't know, Mom. I'll say it. You know what I mean? And so, there she is. It's sort of like a practical way to help people instead of raising it, you know, that next year, maybe giving some of that money towards that. Because like, I'll be honest with you, that, that's not cool. That 3 percent is not going to help people. And I just found it was kind of odd, because everything else stayed the same, and then y'all just want to raise the water 3 percent. I didn't know what, I mean, obviously, this is y'all's job. It was like a logical, it was some reason why y'all wanted to do that, but I just find that that would, like, really, people who are out here, living paycheck to paycheck, budgeting their stuff, that could like really affect their budget. So, just kind of keep that in mind when y'all are doing that, that maybe that's not really a good thing. If y'all not raising the rest of the taxes, why do that one? But I do understand that taxes need to be raised to do, but sometimes when it's something that affects everybody like that, maybe like give the little man a break.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, despite Cameron's ability to speak very fast, we will need a motion by council to extend the meeting past 10:00 PM.
Okay, so, do I have a motion to extend our meeting past 10:00 PM? Do I have a second?
I will second it.
Do we need a roll call on this?
It's going to snow now.
We need a roll call on this one.
Yes.
Aye, aye.
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 So, now we're into the wee hours of the morning. Okay.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
I hereby close the public hearing. Is there a motion to introduce an ordinance imposing taxes for the calendar year 2022?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Dr. Hostetter. Any discussion? This ordinance will carry over until our May 9th regular business meeting. And just so that everybody knows, all the ordinances will have a first and a second and carry over until our May 9th business meeting from here out. Item 12 is to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance amending sections 30-58, paragraph H, 3A, 30-58H, 3B, 66-3C, 86-28A, 86-139F of the Code of the City of Waynesboro. I hereby open the public hearing.
Craig Scott.
Mr. Scott.
Sorry, excuse me, honorable councilmen and women.
I like being kids.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you, my friends. Again, utility can be run cleaner, more, sorry, Dr. Hostetter, efficiently for cleaner water at a economical rate. I would implore the council to, to seek meetings and bids and consultation with vendors that are throughout the country that have a very good track record. You can check with other municipalities here in Virginia, throughout, throughout the republic, and it would be an improved way of, of doing things, as I mentioned in other walks of life, whether it's a choice in shoes. It doesn't matter. Columbia Gas does the gas here. We don't, Waynesboro doesn't have to worry about if a pipe is broken or whatever. And I, it's a utility, it's a quasi-monopoly, which is not as good as a free market choice, like in sneakers or whatever, but it's a step in the right direction. It's, it's a way of creating value for the city, less encumbrances for the employees. They can, their buying power is much more efficient, as I said, for the various pumping houses. Others, cleaner water, they're going to be held to a tighter standard, and the council can watch them and not have to micromanage them. So, you'll have time to do other priorities, like the park or whatever. So, that's all. I mean, a choice in education, choice in, in your tuna fish sandwich, whatever. Thank you very much. Good tired people. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
I close this public hearing. Is there a motion to introduce all those ordinances that I mentioned when I started?
Ordinance of amendments.
Yeah.
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Hostetter. Is there a second? I'll second it. All right, this, this, too, will carry over to our May, is there any discussion? All right, this, too, will carry over to our May 9th meeting. Item 13 is to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an annual appropriation ordinance. I hereby open the public hearing.
No speakers.
Mr. Scott. I, I close the public. Is, is, is there a motion to consider introducing the annual appropriation ordinance?
I will make that motion.
Dr. Hostetter, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Williams. Is there any discussion? This, this motion will carry over to our May 9th regular business meeting. Item 14 is to consider, oh, it's not a public hearing. Item number 14 is to consider appointing Spencer Cross to the Redevelopment and Housing Authority to fill an unexpired four-year term ending August 31st, 2025. Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Cross?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Williams made the motion. Mr. Allen, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Mr. Wood, correspondence, communication, and calendar.
We have none, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing, okay. And then the last item up is our citizen comment period?
No speakers, Mr. Mayor.
No speakers. Well, thank you very much. The next is for a motion to adjourn this meeting. The next is for a motion to adjourn this meeting. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Williams, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Adhere. Good meeting, everyone. Thank you.